Okay, that is, the road ordinance was supposed to be here and apparently not. And since there was a mix-up between about thirty and six, at six to five now, now we need a couple of kids, so.
Mayor Bobson Council, I'm Carolyn Coleman and I'm the treasurer of Trinity United Church. I'm here on behalf of this church about the increased water rates as everyone is here about. And I have photo probably been done a summary sheet of our water usage from December twenty eighth each month through August. And there are four months in which we exceeded the residential rate. I'm presuming that we are commercial. If the church is commercial sits, there's no one living at the church, but the church serves the after-school program and various programs of the church through week. However, with that being said, I do have the usage and I'm here to request that the mayor and council consider having Trinity United Church on the residential rate of water usage and I have summary and sheets that you can look at the bills that we have received. And I'm having a talk with you.
Well, according to residential versus commercial, we have just laid out in a format that the size of the meter. If I'm not mistaken, you only have a three-quarter inch meter there.
I don't really know about the size.
I really don't know off the top of my head either, but the size of the meter and the amount of flow you need is going to be dictated by the size of the meter.
There have been months that we've had water use, is why the usage is up. And the townspeople, they probably haven't got the equipment to know that, but as I said, the number of town residents has documented and has received our water. So, as I said, I'm presuming that we are commercial. We may be residential, but we don't.
Well, we'll begin to what size of meter you have and let you know, but I'm pretty sure that Trinity has a three-quarter meter.
I presume documents will consider. It's for your folks or anything, anything that's issued.
Well, you will get a, you will get an answer sometime next week if you'd like.
I appreciate it.
But I'm pretty sure that you're a residential customer anyway.
Well, I don't know.
I, I don't know for sure, but I would like to know.
Okay, before anybody else says anything, I just want to say, we did not set these rates. I was outside waiting for the guy that wrote this ordinance. I thought he was going to be here tonight. These were set so we can be in compliance to get the money we need to get our water out of town. We didn't, we didn't, we're not going to.
How much we asking for?
For what, John? For what?
You're going to sell bonds, aren't you?
Do what?
Are you going to sell bonds?
Sell bonds.
What are you asking for? When I'm mine?
We, we have to get funded somehow.
Understand, I'm asking.
Uh, that is up in the air because every time we go from one shot to the other, they change something.
Excuse me, when you had your special meeting on September fourth and discussed this, it said that this was, ordinance was authorizing this bond for not more than two hundred thousand dollars. There's a very specific amount associated with it.
That's, that's, I don't know, is that that's totally true, Dave?
Well, this is what you published. This was your meeting notice from September fourth of the special meeting you had that no citizens or reporters came to because we didn't know about it in time. But that you had a meeting where it says, is the first reading and to act upon the proposed ordinance, which is this one, to authorize the design, acquisition, construction and equipping of certain extensions, additions, betterments and improvements to the existing public waterworks, et cetera. And it says, it says through issuance by the city of Piedmont of not more than two hundred thousand dollars in original aggregate principal amount of water system bond anticipation notes, series two thousand nineteen A. That's what John was asking about. This is about financing a bond. You're asking us for two hundred thousand dollars. And at the rate that you're asking us, that they may have set the rate and all that, but at that rate, this bond should be paid back within three years. So I would like to see some sort of language in this ordinance saying that after the end of three years, after the bond is paid off, we revisit these rates. And we don't keep paying this forever because two hundred thousand isn't very much if we're paying it over seventy thousand dollars a year, which is what you're asking us for.
Well, first off, we have to figure out which way we're going to go with this water condition since now, Westernport do not us hook on, hooking on to their raw water line.
This is true, but what we're discussing today for this water thing is two hundred thousand dollars. There's nothing in here about further money being covered by this water increase. This water increase, it says not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. So we're talking a very specific amount here. So that's all I'm going to say about it, but I think you're, that's what we're talking about here and it sounds like you're not even sure yourselves.
No, no.
You're asking us an awful lot. You're asking us for a fifty percent increase in our water rate when you can't even tell us exactly what it's going to be spent for. So that's a little hard for us.
If I knew, I would certainly put it out there.
Yes.
But the fact is that every time we get a plan, it changes.
Well, don't you think we should know? Well, like I said, we did not write this. This was written by John Stone and this was written by John Stone. We did not write either one of them.
To John Stone, to tell him what we, what we want to do.
They were supposed to be here tonight and.
I understand. And I'm not against water, Ed. This is going against the law, but anyway, what we want to do, that's what I, what I need to say, extend the water lines?
We don't have yet. We're still waiting.
What did you say it's for? What did you say it's for?
I can't understand for send rates.
I mean, there's a lot of after questions here. I mean, somebody, somebody up there had called somebody and asked for water, asked for funds?
Well, there was a couple of different things that happened here. First off.
That's what I'm asking. What we looking for?
Okay, we want, we wanted to make an emergency hookup to hook up to Westernport's raw water. Westernport denied the raw water hookup.
Why?
They want to sell your raw water. They want to sell your finished.
Thank God it is.
You said, if you buy finished, yeah, well, wait until, as you can close the pole down for raw water, you'll never operate the pole again.
Why do you think they're fighting this, John?
I'm not, I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing with you, Ben. I'm asking a question, you know, what are you want, what are you going to do? And you say hook up to Westernport? I told you earlier from the city building. You said that temporary? Well, we hooked up the middle waters by ten years ago, temporary.
Yeah.
And we're still on it.
And that temporary then goes where we're at today.
Well, if you, because nobody didn't say anything.
Can the paper mill actually shut you down off of that or whatever?
Yes, they can after, after a year and a day.
Huh?
After a year and a day, they can because you're not a public utility.
You can't, okay.
But we were hoping, Luke has a contract with November twenty twenty. If they have to pay somebody to be up there to give them pot of water, why can't they keep our raw water on? That was my question. If they're not.
It could end up.
I know a year's going to be over anyway, and we had the fed napes and all them are looking in to put an intake here in the Potomac, Corps of Engineers. We're getting our savage up and running again. We don't want to go back home Westernport water. That's what we're trying to fight, but like I said, we're running into obstacles and the prices are different with how much line or pipe line are needed for savage or for here just to there.
So basically what you're saying is this two hundred thousand dollars is going to walk this through the raw water line?
It was.
What's the point?
It was. What's the point?
We don't know. We don't have a hookup. We're, this is to get us a loan for the rest of the infrastructure improvement. To try to get a draw-off, to draw off of the Potomac, if, or clean up our, our draw of savage.
Let me just, let me just say this. You draw out of Potomac, you're going to have additional expenses and treatment of your water across here. The hardness of that water out of Potomac compared to Savage, it's not a problem.
Where's our water? Where you take the waters coming from?
The mill treats it.
And they don't?
The mill treats it to a certain, they filter it.
We, we get all raw water.
You don't get water straight out of Potomac.
Yes.
No, you don't. No, I'm telling you, I work for it, you don't. It, it, it's not, it's not treated to, to a potable water, but it is treated to a certain degree goes into fire time. You're not getting water straight out of Potomac. None of their water comes straight out of Potomac. It comes out of Potomac, goes into the treatment plant. It just doesn't go through the treatment facility for cori, for nation and all that.
Where's we getting the water?
That's why we have a Corps of Engineers on who work with us. They have the ones that's going to.
I really don't see what, like I told you, Paul, what I've seen and what I know, and this man right here can tell you. I don't think, I think you should put that raw water line back in service with.
The one from Savvy?
A tenth, a tenth of this line of money. There's no reason, no cost two hundred thousand dollars to get that line back to service. There's no reason we need it for the need thing that's the ton of dirt.
Two hundred thousand dollars would take care of refurbishing the line and any pumps that would be needed.
Yeah, say that again, what you just said.
I meant that two hundred thousand dollars would take care of refurbishing the line and servicing any pumps that would be needed.
What everybody don't realize is there's seven miles of pipeline coming from up there. The terrain that it's coming through, there's a, there's a big cost to that. And just preparing the dam up there, if anyone would up there and take a look at it, it's in pretty sad shape.
Corps of Engineers tore that dam off.
That's why we call it a bad dam.
They, they tore up and they didn't fix it up.
That's why.
Well, that shouldn't be on us. Corps of Engineers, they have no records of that.
But they are, I know it's out.
I was, I was a worker. They did. I'm just telling you.
What did you talk about?
If you get a minute, I'll tell you. That's what I'm saying. I'm going to tell you that. He, I'm not arguing. I'm not, I'm.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Well, they're already doing what somebody did. They changed, they changed bounds and you know, we're.
All the, the.
We had it in our watershed ship. Do you know why we are on Westernport Paper Mill water?
I guess it was because of our intake up there.
No, we ran into the raw water line, down one thirty-five from Savvy. And we did that. Mickey Rocco was here and he did that. We ran that line through our cells. What we did, we took it out of the road because we had continuous leaks. When you had a leak, you had to notify Maryland State Highway Administration. Then you had to have flagman up there. And if you had flagman and you dug it up, you could not leave it until it was completely fixed and covered up. You couldn't like say, we'll get the rest of it tomorrow. You can't do that. You have to stay with it no matter what it takes. So we took that line out of one thirty-five because of the trucks and everything. Between the savage wood yard and the guardhouse, the first guardhouse coming down on thirty-five towards the mill, there is a brand-new land. It's over. We put it underneath where the river track used to be. Then you run, we took it out from underneath and lived one thirty-five. So now if you had a leak in it, which is a brand-new land, well then you don't have to notify Maryland. You don't have to have a flagman. You just have to fix it, you know, but we don't figure that we have the problem with it because you don't have the truck traffic and the, and the pounding and everything, you know, that tore up the line together. That's why we went on the old water because we, we cut our water off to put that line over there. And that's been ten years ago.
Why didn't we go back on it?
We were supposed to.
I want to hear them.
I understand that.
We were supposed to. Westernport's.
I mean, you're always.
I am, of course.
Do you have any plans or drawings? Because we have a thousand.
No, they're not. They planned. Mickey, they're not. Marcus can tell you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I know that Johnny, I'm going to tell you. Well, Johnny, the, the, the rest of the reason why we went to West Bay because in ninety-six we had a flood and fall hollow and wiped it out there. And when we got the break, back in ninety-eight there, we put it back in service. And when we put it back in service there, it was still back in service until two thousand eight. Then that's when they changed, I suspect they put the new line going, going down one thirty-five. After that, they never did put it, put it back in service in Savage.
That line has never, that brand-new line has never flown in the California.
Yes, it's energized. It's energized.
It's generated.
Marcus. Marcus.
Yes.
That line is pressurized, right?
Well, no, no, no one coming down, not one thirty-five.
Static. I say it's never flown. There could be water anywhere. I'm not arguing that point. I'm saying this, it's never flown. Now the water is still there, it's our reservoir. We've never put it back on. It needs to hide in a river.
Didn't, didn't Westernport, didn't Westernport and the Luke have a call now about the water there on that turn? And that's what stopped it? And they all decided to give us the water?
I don't know.
It couldn't, they, they had it. That's the reason the turn was applied, you know, and the whole non-large right there at that first guardhouse.
I don't know about, I can't answer that. I know the key one's line. We moved it, cleaned up the ground.
See, that's, that's what we, I know Marcus told us, a lot of people told us that, but the thing is, is we have no documentation stating that any of this was even done.
Well, T I was in there. Why don't you, I mean, T I don't know this.
I can't.
I mean, as good as we're some T I remember when we did the work.
I can't answer that. All I know is, I know that I have been told several times by a lot of people to be able to line there. We have not found no kind of drawings, no kind of paperwork stating it's there or, or it's like. All we have is what is being sent to us. The only way we can know for sure is take somebody up there with us, hit it up in front of the line and see what's going on. Because I have. I mean, we, we have.
What's that, Pat?
That's my biggest concern. Well, one concern is nobody's for sure whether we ran the new line with Borough Bridge in the past. They don't know.
Right.
Because.
For what they're all the way down.
Nobody knows cross Mary Queen. Nobody knows if there's any water in that line anywhere because nobody's went and checked. All they got to do is go up there and clean that intake to get water flowing. If it's break somewhere, they're going to say it. But nobody did anything.
I'm going to show you what the intake looks like.
Completely ignore it. That's, that's why I would say, Rick, because it's been ignored.
Yeah, the water hasn't been pushed away from.
Yeah, it went out there ten years ago. We get his debris, got it fixed up and then he got back on the water.
We just went, that's when the Olympics, when they had to re-tour all that out, they could have fixed it right after.
Well, no, yeah, after they did that in eighty-five, we were still getting water until ninety-six or so. You can't blame it on all that there. No, it's the laziness of the tower, but not by a brother maintaining a bench fake up there. It's simple, it's what it is. It's ridiculous.
That's a possibility too, Mark.
There's no possibility that that's it there. But it's just no giving that. We did it all the time. So, so I can't, we, we had three people. I had four or five.
I can't speak for the, the former before. All I can speak for is what we have done in the last four or five years will be taken over. Okay, I can't speak, well, I can't say before that, okay? I know, I feel the same way a lot of you do with this town. It's been like that for many, many years. I couldn't do, you know.
Are there no records in the city buildings of work that has been done or things that have been purchased? I would think that there would be.
The last few years, the last four or five years they have been, I can't speak from before that because there's a lot of things that.
We have records of ours.
Got that.
We don't have any prior.
We also have that.
What, when you think, before we ever had a meeting and asked for any money, we would go up there and look and see what we do have, ask questions and find out.
Well, we have a record with the Corps of Engineers joining of your zipper.
I'm not talking, I'm talking about just the dam. I'm talking about the whole.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
About the dam, all the way down. I mean. When Rick, being nobody sitting there who's in this.
That's what we talked about. We also talked about maybe trying to tap into a blue, that we found there water supply there too.
I understand. What I'm trying to say though, doesn't seem like anybody's aware of what's going on on one thirty-five.
No.
And that's why I'm asking, you know, why don't somebody find out what's going on there?
One thirty-five pipe is energized.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking.
And, but it's not connected to nothing down here.
It's not energized there.
It's connected up by a wood yard.
Oh, yeah. It's like a water line from the wood yard up to about a fall hollow, my, my laser back here in two, two thousand.
How about the Borough Bridge? Is it hooked in there?
There's a lot of, it's not a lot of, at the Borough Bridge.
Yeah. Did we run that line down?
Doesn't run that way.
Huh?
It doesn't run toward the Borough Bridge.
No, you get to run across the cross.
Run across the Borough Bridge.
Down one thirty-five, where the dinkie run. And since they've taken up the tracks out, they put that Borough Bridge in, the new Borough Bridge. It goes across to Potomac on one thirty-five, not the old Borough Bridge.
I'm, I'm sorry. I was thinking, thinking the old.
That's what I'm trying to tell you.
It, it does run straight up through the wood yard there and makes a turn.
I'm asking though, is it hooked in there?
As far as I know, yes.
I don't think it is.
Well, I'll tell you what, by the end of the week, I'll find that out.
Well, that's what I'm trying, that, that's the whole point. And I'm not knocking anybody, but I'm just saying that before we sit there and argue about it, we could have some answers. What's going on? What do we need?
How about the next time that we can get these people up there, I'll give you a call and.
I went to council and I told Ben, before we ever looked into money for anything, we could at least now talk about.
So that way we can take these.
I'll answer that question.
Because I don't know.
What I'm trying to say, what the heck are we sitting here for? The people don't have the answers.
All I know is we have to have water and we need water.
I'll agree with that. I'll agree with that.
Right now, the only option is cutting the Westernport.
To look at the Westernport.
You'll never know. That's, that's like, we don't want to do that, Johnny. No, we don't want to do that. No, we have to come over our officers on tape. It's just, it's, don't know for sure if it will work. Right there, we want to go with it.
I think the one thing you don't want to go away is going to be rich or.
My thing is, no matter what they find or don't find, I don't think the people with Keymont, a majority of them, myself and Lee can afford that being raised. I mean, yeah, I know you're tired of hearing the milk shutdown. And I know Mr. Smith, who said it's not our fault at last meeting, he must have watched it. It's not my fault either. It's not his fault. He worked there for a few years. He can't afford it.
Didn't you say first someone's going to give, might as well a new line? They offered.
They, they offered to, they offered to help with the tap if we tapped over to the raw water. You know, what everybody don't understand, there's so many different avenues that we're going to have to look down, you know? And don't get me wrong, as far as I'm concerned, this rate increase is a little premature anyhow. However, however, it's not our idea.
I'm not arguing about.
But who's our idea is longer than the amount?
But let, let's look at this practically.
The funding agency is going to give us money. Said we had to have water in house.
How did they, how did they?
I don't know.
Did they, did they?
He's supposed to be here, you know, but we, you know, we don't know.
And I'll tell everybody here, this is going to get us a problem right now because the mill funds the Upper Tonne River Commission. The mill don't fund that anymore. They funded ninety, ninety-something percent of that. Now that's going to be whipped over Keymont now. Because I understand that Westernport's already talking about running the sewage line up thirty-six to Franklin to put their sewers through there. So they won't be on that. So the only one that's going to be paying for that Upper Tonne River Commission is your looking at.
Yeah, and Mary Howard contacted me and he said our best bet would be to get out to Hazard and get on theirs and pick up Keymont on the way down.
Well, that's far as I know, that five mile sewer line. Yeah, I'm still saying, that's another one down there. So now we're asking for a watering increase, going in, pretty substantial increase. Now, as soon, as soon as this thing we hear of, okay, now we're all happy, no we're not. Now they got, now we got sewer line. So we're, we're going to be sitting right back down here again in a year and we're going to be talking about a big sewage increase. And the type of people sending Keymont, you have low income, fixed income and no income. And that's what people made.
You know, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm not trying to.
Well, I say I pay a hundred and seventeen right now. I even make a hundred and fifty being a mayor. So when it raises, being a mayor, you can help me pay my water bill. I mean, I'm breaking on with yours. Yeah, I'm just saying.
I don't have to pay the hundred dollars for a water sewage bill. But that's about as much as we're meant to.
But like I said, we're, we're lined up here now because we were supposed to be, they were supposed to be here to answer all your questions.
This meeting should be posted on.
Yeah. I agree. That was, that are waiting for us. Yeah.
You should.
We won't, we won't be the final reading because there's Mary.
Like I said, there's got to be, there's got to be questions there. We have to have information for that. We have to know where that water line goes down one thirty-five. We got to know if it's hooked in on Savvy. We got to know if it's hooked in at the Borough Bridge. We have to know if it's hooked in down at Paper Mill. And we have to know if our pump in the Paper Mill is still up. We won't be good at moving it. Well, well, then we need a pump. That's something else you got to add to that.
Well, here's, here's the big thing. And this, this is, this is the big, you've got seven miles of water line coming up there. You guys put in a mountain, right? There, so now we still got six miles up that way. I mean, that's fine that we got that new piece of water line where it's energized or it's not energized or not. To get back up to our dam site, we still got it in ten years or twelve years deteriorating pipe going.
Oh, you got to have twelve years. You have hundreds of years now. That, that, when they're like.
Yeah, but we all know that if it's stagnant and there is a water flow, it's going to break the question.
That, that's what we think we have to know. Well, we got to find out. If we got to run a blow-off down there and find out if we can run water.
The blow-off has pressure off, but how much?
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. Even.
The blow-off has.
Um, I can see no arguing with that. I'm just trying to tell you, those things we have to know before we can sit down here. We got to know what we want to do with the line. Are, are we going to sweat up our origin? Are we going to hook in with Potomac? Are we going to hook back in our savage line? Are we going to take water off the Westernport? I don't, I don't know.
Well, you know yourself, if we take the hook, take the clear water out of Westernport and shut our water plant down, it'll never reopen. It's just like that pipeline.
That's exactly what I'm getting at. Now, if we do that, what income will people have at work? Because we don't have any garbage anymore. We give that away. And if you give them water away.
Well, you're, you're right. And that's what we're trying to avoid by, by exploring every avenue we can. I mean, hooking up over there is, to me, is not an option. But all the funding agencies say it is because they don't want to fund a water plant for two hundred and seventy-one people. Now, the next, the next thing is, if we hook up to, hook up to a draw-off in Potomac, I know it's going to be a little bit more to, to, to treat that water. But however, you know, we use about seventy to a hundred thousand gallons a day of people. And we're, we need to get a new water line up to the plant too, if we get all of this in place where the pressure and everything else is.
We have a water line in the plant. We ran that line with water commission. We wore it up there. We talked about, we moved our line off the Iron Bridge.
So that's the one there.
Don't tell me, Ben, don't tell me. I know what I'm telling. Our water line was on the old Iron Bridge.
It's torn down.
I know. I, I, that's what he said in his picture. I'm telling you, I know. We moved our line, we moved it down and we cut across the Iron Bridge.
Okay, that's right.
And we wore underneath railroad tracks and we ran a new line up the hill through it. We didn't want to. Thank you. Tell you what, Terry, why would you? Somebody's asking for it. Nothing I know of, nothing I know of. Nobody, I asked for it, I asked for it. I, I requested that at a council meeting, but nobody's, nobody ran my, but the lady part of my rock had been like.
Mary Fair took that line up there new.
They also did a reservoir. They put the lining in, I was wondering, measure what it is. They put ducted cover on the reservoir. They put the lining in the boat plate, which we don't use boat plate anymore. You want, right? Why don't we use the other plate?
Because it's tore down. There's a ton of good for it now.
The tanks all down the hill.
No, no, there's a, there's a, oh, big reservoir. A hundred sixty dollars a day. The reservoir is tore down. Yep. There's a big one there.
Well, I know, I know, we had the water leak up on Prairie View Street. If we'd had a fire in this town, they'd have to bring water from Western Port or somewhere else, but we didn't have enough in the road. We, people down here ran out of water, they didn't have any water.
Pretty much.
I know that, and you know, the EPA and all these other agencies say that you have to not have more water than you can turn over twenty percent of it in twenty-four hours. And that was a lot of the reason why the, the tank went in. But we only, we only lost around, uh, right about a hundred thousand gallons. That's a hundred eighty-four thousand gallons, and the other one was not quite three hundred thousand. So we did lose a hundred thousand gallons of storage. But the EPA says, and the Health Department says, you have to turn over twenty percent of your water in a twenty-four hour time. So that's a lot of it too. Did you have a question?
I have a question. I, this sounds to me like, these guys are new, but what's going on? John and Marcus and him, Pat. Sounds like they need, they'll need to get together with them, but they're telling what's going on. So John, you're not listening to what they're saying. You think you know everything, so they can't tell you anything. They're trying to tell you what they did. They did the work, nobody else did the work, they did the work, and then we finished. The ones that are new on the job, you need to listen to them, because that's what they did. They did the work, let them tell, tell you what they did. And go from there. From there, you go where you need to go, find out what needs to be done. You start all over, whatever needs to be done. Then we can have a meeting about what has to be done. What you need to listen to them.
Well, time is running out, yes. And yes, we should listen to them, and I talked, and I went to your office and talked to you about this about a year ago now. I talked to you two years ago about, about the long water line. Well, yes, that is, that's true.
Oh, I would like to make a suggestion in the form of a recommendation, that when there is another meeting of the community regarding this, that it show and tell. That you have something we can see, explain through a flow chart, through some schematic of the water lines, something so that we can see where it's coming from, where it's going. People that wrote up that proposal for the rates, have them have something uh, over their projector, so we can see. When you see something, you better understand, and have a hand down of what has been presented.
Don't we have maps of the water lines coming down through there? There's got to be maps here someday.
I, I have all the maps. I even got them in, some of them in the truck.
The water line, I helped them do it. Marcus was up there, John Schindler was up there from the... Where crosses the bridge off Savage down to the...
The Fetterhouse Turn.
Down to the Fetterhouse Turn, and then it stopped. Because it was, Western Port was one of, they wanted to remove that turn. In Western Port, in the Mill Valley, some kind of hassle, and that's the water that goes and we've been on that side and doing the same. Federation back, turn. These guys that worked on there, John Schindler knows about it, I hate to say that.
Yeah, John would probably be the one to know if it goes across the Borough Bridge or not, not there. Now, he'd be the one to know that there. But I asked, I mean, Rick, you have said something to me, and I, I said, I will go, I'll walk the Savage line from the reservoir all the way to the thing to show you exactly where it plays at. But just like, I mean, Pat told you that, I told you that, but it might have been a years or so ago, and no one still hasn't, hasn't asked. I mean, if your foreman, I mean, if he, I mean, what, have your foreman want to walk with me? I mean, should he know, know the lines and knows where the thing, the ladies at?
Well, he's a foreman.
Well, why, why, why you don't have to ask?
You tell me, man.
What day do you want to walk?
Well, you can, I mean, because you've been there for about, we've been dealing with this for about, on this ten years.
What day would you like to walk it?
Oh, what day you want to, I can walk it, we can go anytime.
It's Saturday.
You can tell too. Well, you, but the water connection.
No, no.
Yeah.
Do some funding agents.
DOJ DC, the USDA.
And the EEA.
And the APA.
EEA.
E who?
I'm trying to show you what the mindset used to be here, just like when they were trying to replace those sewage pumps going down to Rattail. I was in the city building, and I tried to explain to them that they need to do some sewage pumps. And I, and between, uh, TI and Tim Jackson, I pretty near got thrown out of that city building over there. They couldn't, they didn't know what I'm talking about, and this and that. And I told myself, I know what I'm telling you. I know what the pumps do. The reason you think you need it, because you don't know what the pumps do. But anyway, did they replace those pumps? Apparently I knew something, and you know why they didn't replace them? Tell them that, why didn't they replace them?
On sewer line.
Huh?
On sewer line.
Yeah, why didn't they replace, who'd you go to?
Gary How.
Glenn How.
Gary How.
Or Gary How. He went to Gary How and gone up with those pumps. They was wanting to replace those pumps. And he went to Gary How and told him what I said, and he said, well, they don't need replaced, or not going to be replaced. And it turned out, they didn't need to be replaced. Now, we, we got a straight sewer line up. We don't have to worry about Potomac Edison, what it costs for the, uh, pump that sewage back up to Hamford Street. We don't need to worry about the pumps and maintenance or anything. Or there's, God's going for us what we used to pay PD to do.
Well, the pumps were, uh, in working order, but the, but the, uh, pressure line going up through there was, something was wrong with it, it was...
Well, that means you don't need the pumps.
Well, you don't.
You were paying, you were paying the sewer sucker to walk through everything. However often. The pump down there, what was that cost?
Two hundred and seventeen dollars a week.
Listen, I want to ask you, I don't want to ask you. The reason that Keynesha Dam is up there is why? Explain to me why it's where it is? That's where we first started getting the water in Keynesha?
Yeah, we bought that property.
Okay, listen, I wanted to ask you another question. Below the first bridge is where it picks up the surface water from up here at the mines. Is there any way to spook or thought, any way we can pick it up behind the first bridge? You save six miles, you save, you save six miles.
That's where, that's where Bloomington pictures are.
Yeah.
Can't we get with Bloomington? That water runs, that water runs, it runs ten times that water that we're going to use. And it's only right there above the first bridge, and you're going to hit your ground pressure.
Well, uh, let me say this now. Uh, Bobby Wheeler from Bloomington is, I'm trying to set up a meeting with him along with Kingsbury. And I spoke to Josh Nash today from Kingsbury, and he's going to try to set the meeting up. And there's a possibility that that's a good way to go. But we're still on, still dealing with Marin. And what their rates will be versus, uh, versus Western Port or anybody else, I do not know. But, uh, hopefully, not tomorrow, but the next Thursday, I'll have an answer to that question.
The next question, the next part of the question, there's no way we can get some of the Georgia State water, it's down with the Federation back.
Well...
Just ask.
Well, there is, there is a way to do that too, but when you do that, you've got to cross the river. And, you know, uh, it's, it's a, a million bucks to go under the river, you know that. Well, horizontal drilling doesn't, ain't cheap. And there has to be a pit done ten foot below the riverbed with all kinds of safety precautions in it to do horizontal drilling. Okay, this is, uh, some figures on getting across there, and if it's pure water, it has to be encased and all that, because they don't want treated water going under the river unless it's, has...
Double casing.
Double casing and two ways of, uh, not contaminating the river.
Now, the last question I got to ask is, is I see our dollars and all the time that we got the Chesapeake Cleanout. There's a lot of funding comes out of there. The sewer plant, this is, we're on that shed ground. That should be checked into.
It's been checked into, through the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, and such as John mentioned a little bit ago, that sewage plant down there is going to be our next issue. It's, there's no getting around it. You know, uh, when you take ninety-eight percent of your business away, where are you at?
Right.
So I agree with what you say, John, about the sewage plant. But there's a lot of things about these water lines and all that no one really understands. Sure, we got a water line. But we don't have an intake to draw it off of. We can put it here, but we still got to come across the river with it, because there's a bunch of tore up pipelines underneath the Mill Wood Yard. Not, not the wood yard, but the Mill Yard.
We're across the river there.
Yeah, we're across the river, but we're hanging off of the Mill Bridge, right?
Yeah.
Not allowed to do that, because the mill wants us to...
We can't take it off, we have to...
You can maintain it.
Why take off that bridge?
We got, the mill wants us to take it off the bridge.
Who told you that from the mill?
Denver Brit.
Who?
Denver Brit.
I think we're going to need to have some government to, uh, come here and fight it.
I'll find that one.
Yeah, that's the right way to do it.
Some things out here, that's hearsay, you know? I think it ain't, I think some of those just by people saying they, they're big and big and chief and all that, and they can do things. I don't think that's right. We got to have some government to come in, state of Maryland, state of West Virginia, you got to come in, fight this water now. They got to fight it. They can't sit and fight.
Well, do you think we all been sitting around here with our finger in our ears?
I can tell you, they're sitting around with their fingers. But I don't see nobody here behind me. Nobody, nobody.
They're standing all there.
Nobody's saying that. We're just going off of that. That's all we're trying to do.
Well, I...
There's money, there's a lot of money down there on that Chesapeake Bay Cleanout. That don't mean just storage. There's fresh water we need to check into.
Well, I've been down there, you don't think that.
I, I don't see how, I don't see how the state of Maryland, state of West Virginia, let a paper mill close us down and shut all the water off. They're asking some kind of emergency way that we can get around it. Or temporary way to get around it. Western Port's holding us in hostage right now, and that's... Pardon my French, but it's bullshit.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. Okay, we're all here for the standards. You keep saying, what people don't understand, what people don't understand. Admittedly, I don't understand, but there are several people in this room that do.
Well, they may be the person for their job then.
Please, please let me finish. What I don't understand is, these guys are all willing to help. Why not tap into their expertise and knowledge? I don't get it.
I don't either.
Well, they're all welcome. Just set up a time, and Bernie can go up and walk the line or whatever they need to be doing.
Because right now, we're not getting any answers for, for questions. And I think, yeah, I don't understand how lawyers are...
What's the, huh? West Bay going to be right away for our water. They have to be right away for that water line, right? You couldn't probably rob these on the water line. That's going to mean they can't tell you take it out. It's a right of, just like, you got a piece of ground, and it runs up to your line. You can't do nothing about it, because, you know, they get the right of way.
There's, there's, there's two sides to that, that we could actually leave the line on the bridge, and we have to take the liability from the bridge.
Well, I was in charge of rolling the paper mill. We had rolled it, weighed sixty tons. Must have been trapped in a barrel of coal. And we had concerns over that bridge about what it could hold. That's got five thirty-two inch or thirty-six inch I-beams underneath of that bed. And they told us that, that would take a local load, a train, to cross that bridge and not damage it. That's engineering program that. So I figure that bridge is going outlast anybody sitting here, maybe our children. So not a special problem to them, but that bridge is going to be there a long, long time, and you ain't going to have to do a thing.
Well, uh, you know, I don't know about what happens when the mill comes down, because we don't know who's going to take over the mill, whether they're going to use the bridge, they're going to maintain the bridge.
It doesn't matter what they do or not, I mean...
The water line...
The water line is not in every way, it's on the side of the bridge, they're hanging over the side. I broke on that line. Like you said, we've had leaks on that line, and if you have a leak, you can't let the Royal Water rock into the Potomac, because it's, yeah, it'll be on you. So we've had down there, we picked that line. And I know it's, like I said, but, uh, like I said, that, that line isn't going anywhere. And we've already water underneath the tracks and run a new line up the hill. So, I don't think that bridge should even be up. Uh, that, that shouldn't even be had to pick for a Florida company, so.
The old water line come across, the old water line come across the bridge, right? What, forty feet above it?
Well, I think it's up, but it's way above it.
No, but I'm saying, come across the old bridge.
The one, the old Iron Bridge?
No, the old, it's concrete, I forget. We, oh, forty-six went across there.
That, that, that water line laid right on the, that of the bridge. But you wasn't careful across the bridge.
That's true.
Now, this here on the wooden bridge, it is not only that, it's all the side of the sand.
Where's your, where's your board?
Well, you were saying about, uh, Bill Bacon, you want to take the water line off the wooden bridge. Okay, now what about the, when it comes up out of our pump house, goes down the tracks, goes right in front of the communications, uh, uh, officer, and runs that big warehouse down, down, back in nineteen, uh, nineteen ninety-eight there, the mill was, it used to run right underneath of that warehouse, but when they built that, added on to that warehouse, uh, the mill paid for a new line to put on the outside of that ware- warehouse, and right at the edge, the edge up there, uh, the trains back into the, uh, back into, uh, to get loads there, it comes, it comes out there and goes in front of the guard shack. I mean, if you're worrying about the, uh, the bridge, I mean, are you going to have to maintain all that too?
That's why we don't want to build the mill properly, Marcus. I mean, yeah, you mean maintain the railroad track?
No, it's maintain the line that's going through, just going on the side of the, on the side of the building. I mean, if they're making, you're making, taking off the bricks, they're going to make it dig it up out out there too, or make it?
Well, there, there's a lot of different ways they've been trying to approach this. Uh, first off, you know, we had two breaks over there in the, at the mill, where the pipe's underneath the track.
Mm-hmm.
And the way it runs underneath there, you can't dig it with the backhoe or the...
Yeah, you, yeah, you can. I, I've dug many of them, or you can dig with a backhoe, yes you can. I've, I've dug, and I was up there with TI, and I dug after that.
Well, we had two breaks up there. And the one that's coming, coming parallel with the tracks, it's coming like across it.
Yes.
And you have to, you have to take out a dozen ties and pay the railroad companies while you're doing all that.
Yeah, we, we have done that, yes.
And, and it's, that's what a good idea to be, to have that all underneath the railroad tracks. And, but yet they won't let us cross the railroad tracks without casing it and everything else. So how can they put that in there without casing it and everything?
Well, I mean, I just don't think, that part wasn't, wasn't in, in there. Uh, I, they had it right, that, that was, that was between, uh, the pump house and, uh, the, the main location. Uh, if they never replaced that, I would still, the old stuff from nineteen hundred or whatever, they put that in there.
Clinton still keeps blowing up, you know? There's, there's been three, two breaks since I've been around here, involved in this part of the system. And when that thing, it always breaks in, at the wrong time of the year, naturally. And, uh, you know, it's generally split, the pipe break down in the middle where you got to replace ten, fifteen, twenty feet of. So digging all that out and trying to get another pipe up there, you know, where you've been there, it's, it's not an easy task coming up.
There's not that much traffic down the middle now.
No, but there was, there was, we had the breaks.
No, but I was just saying, you know, what happened, what happens if they just close down the shop? Somebody's going to come in and scrap it, right? Somebody's going to come in and scrap it, you want to go in and check it into it. They won't quit to check it into.
There's, there's so many unknowns about all this stuff and, 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 you know, we're expected to have all these answers that we, and, and I know we should, but we don't.
We're not, we're not, we're not, we're not told you to that. We're just trying to tell you the history and what's going on around here. We would've had water, we would've had Western Forest water if the mill and Tom Smith hadn't gotten a big order delivered. And that's what happened in the turn while the turn was never finished flat down.
Well, I, I've been talking to a lot of people about this water line. I, I know John offered his assistance. I did talk to Pat because he, he was there in, in my timeframe. But anyhow, Schinkler's been around two or three times, both George and John. And they're, they're the ones that went out to the blow-off and said that water line is pressurized to that blow-off from the bridge to the mill guard shack. But I will find that out myself. I'll go turn the valve on myself next week.
What I'm telling you, I myself helped stem on that mass stretch. I dumped stem right off of it, right off the river. John pushed it in the shop. He was there, he was...
You know, we know the water line's there. That's not disputed. The water line is there. But, uh, you know, according to everybody that you go to, to a funding agency, they're looking at this as a water line from the draw-off cleared down here because we can't produce a record that it was ever fixed. So in order to, you know, they're not gonna hook a new line to an old line, in other words, and, and have a warranty on something from up there. So, you know, we're, we're dealing with a double-edged sword here. I mean, I, it's just...
Do you think we need, do you think we need some outside help?
I, I've been searching outside help. I've been, I've been, I can show you letters that I wrote to every senator we have. Letters that I wrote to, uh, the governor.
Can we get a petition? Send it to the governor's office?
We can get a petition. Whether it'll do any good or not, I don't know, but it's worth a try.
It's worth a try, yeah.
Ben, it's, it's not your fault. Nobody, nobody's waiting here for you to say you did it. No, you didn't do it, but I'll tell you what has happened. We've been on mill water for ten years. And by being on the mill water, that means we, wouldn't be right for us to take no water than charge them for their machine shop, their, uh, storeroom, the old storage building down our peewalk. And they have big hookup lines, like you said, the size of the hookup. Well, we've been losing money for ten years because nobody's put initiative to be back on our own line. Well, we could've been, we could've been charged with the mill without water and that would've been a... I, I'd like to know what that would've amounted to.
Well, this is, this is some of the things that, you know, not all of this happened during our administration. It happened...
I'm not quite in favor of you. We had, like, I'm going out, I, I, I come across the wrong way. That's not what I'm saying. You know, you inherited a lot of that. He inherited a lot of it. And everybody's looking for it, you know what I'm saying?
If you, you said that, that George and Johnson, it was pressurized down...
Down to, to the blow, to the blow-off? There's a valve in Frog Hole, right?
Yeah, you know, like the cold springs, Frog Hole, up there by, uh, Moons, there's, there's one, one there.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, you have several of them there. So, where's the, you said it's pressurized?
Now, you know where the, the short turn is there going down the little by the guard shack?
Yeah.
Just right around the corner there, there's a big flag up there that has the blow-off on it.
If it's pressurized, if it's pressurized, then why haven't been using it then?
My question is, Tim.
Well, I mean, because if John were to count, accounts on me, John were the, the water, the street people's boss, I mean, why, why can't you just tell them if it's pressurized? I mean, I, I, I mean, I mean, what, I didn't, I didn't decide, uh, make, check the pump or make sure the pump is, is, is all right, the packing and everything is having, what's...
The, the pump is no good.
Okay, the pump ain't no good?
It, it's beyond being rebuilt work. I mean, I know we, we rebuilt it for a week. We, we had the engineer in there looking at it. It sit there all this time, not running, no water going, damp, cold. It's pretty well shot, the valves are all split, box sticks is cracked. And the piping, so it's rarely to pull out, like, it's cracked.
So, so, I mean, we can't, I mean...
To replace it, how great it is to put that pump on.
Uh, oh, yeah, I know, I mean, what it'll cost, but, I, I mean, you don't have to, I mean, get one that, I mean, that's humongous. I mean, something, but my, uh, already daggone depleted most of our storage up the red front door. So, I mean, you don't need someone's gonna pump a thousand gallons a minute or...
See, our water will gravity flow for a while.
All the way to the rest of the water. Bow, bow, bow.
Leave that.
Yeah.
It will?
Oh, yeah.
But you don't get enough flow to supply the town with heat. If I was gonna do anything with that, I would, I would get rid of that pump up in the mill. I would put a bike there, uh, I, I would put a dummy line to her, you know, put a spore in there and get rid of that pump. And I'd try to go and put a new pump house down there right before you cross the road and come onto the wooden bridge.
Well, there's a lot of things that we would like to do. Everything that we have is on somebody else's property that needs permission to do so.
Then if you ask them, they say no, but then that, then that's pretty well taken care of.
This is all we have.
You ask the mill, you can put a pump house?
We can put a pump house.
Well, that's what I just said.
Yeah, but there's a lot of other things you gotta have some more to do.
I'm not saying, well, I'm saying, like, well, I'm just saying, you said there are different things we can approach and we can look at. And I'm saying, let's, let's sit down sometime. Pick a day, pick a day, pick a day, you pick a day. I'll sit down, we can work on that.
John, you're retired, you're retired, Mitch retired, or this quarter. You know, Ben's not retired.
All right, all right.
Yeah.
You got me, that's all right. I worked, and we have to work together, there's skill. You know, whatever's good, the good, the good, the good, the good, the day, I'll be there.
Pick a day.
I have a question, whoever wants, Mr. President, whoever... And thank Ben by the answer part of the question before I have to pass the question, but... Is it not true that probably the funding for this line was for, basically for the benefit of supply of water to Kingsford? Is that why we were drawn up the tonne?
Huh?
Providing water to Kingsford Charcoal. Is that in the plan?
Not yet, but they had asked and we said, yes.
That's why we want to draw out the tonne.
No. When four engineers came here to take us up to Savage, he looked at us and said, what would you like to see happen? And I said, I'd like to have intake right here on our river and not do it there. And he said, that's not impossible.
No, it's hard.
That's how that...
That it's not impossible.
He said, he said, three cities do it, and it's not impossible.
But to answer your question, in fact...
They were supposed to make us plans for that, plus plans for coming from Savage. We haven't heard about them yet. I would say for me interested in being a water, possibly in a water utility, difficult without water, but that's not...
They want, they want finished water, remember?
Yeah.
They want finished water, they don't want raw water.
Well, this is, this is just in a discussion stage right now. As I mentioned earlier, I'm gonna be talking to Josh Nash next week. But, you know, anytime you can put more people on a program, you're, you're, you got a better chance of funding. And, you know, these things aren't just a couple of hundred thousand dollars.
You look at what's the water paying for that new trunk line on them, what's the bay paying? If you take one off, where you're gonna pay a bay fee, then you're gonna, then you're gonna pay that trunk line fee also. That's what we had cost on top of what our prepared increase is gonna be. That would be on top of that. I think that would die, that comes out about, between Chesapeake Bay and the, uh, and the trunk line fee, that comes out about thirty-five dollars a truck. Hey, you're...
And you can afford that.
I, I don't have a objection to supply water to Kingsford, but I don't think it should be on the basis of, I don't lose power.
Kingsford is a contemporary, a, a, a beach. They're one of the biggest developers in the country. They can, they can afford to work. No, but I'm saying, if they're gonna buy water off us, get something different. I'm serious. Kingsford is a city area, a beach. Out of acres in the world.
You know, even if we wouldn't do that, they would be a water customer, just like anybody else.
They would pay for it.
Yeah.
I was saying, I'm...
They said they would like to be our water customer. That's what they told us.
Yeah.
They told us, if you get your own water, we would like you to be our water utility. We will pay you for water instead of the casser.
That's fine, absolutely wrong.
And that's income considered.
According to...
But that was just, he had been just talking, but they said, they, they're gonna have to go and drill it anyway, but they still would like to draw all of us and not Western Forest if we can get ours on there.
They only use about five thousand gallons a month, from what I understand.
What?
Kingsford, they only use about five thousand gallons a month unless they flush hikers.
Market?
Market.
How are we gonna get it? I don't use a lot of water, but I, I've been working.
They do a lot of water, that's what it is. I know we use a lot of water up there.
I don't know, a lot of water, a lot of water. I don't know the process, I don't know what...
When is this increase supposed to take effect? Are y'all gonna wait and find out who's gonna help us, who's gonna pay half what we don't have to have or... Well, we're not gonna be able to get a third reading tonight, so that's gonna put us behind the funding and everything else. We'll read this tonight, we're...
We need to project the funding before we can...
Yeah. Yeah, right. And when it would, if we wouldn't then, the kind of reading night, which we're not, and has to go through forty-five days before it's going to affect, and since we're not doing it.
I think we need to figure out what we're gonna do before we start, you know? This, I, y'all want me to organize a meeting between all you guys? I can do that.
Be happy to.
I got, uh, my other question is, you had down the bottom of the chute, you said, you said the total water warrants may be inspected by the public at the office of the, uh, in the city of Bemo, fifty-two second street, Bemo on West Virginia. I tried to get something on it, but I couldn't get that going. So I wondered why that would put down the bottom of the letter, if you couldn't get that to the city there.
Did who you ask?
Huh?
Who did you ask?
I asked at the city building, and they said they didn't have anything on it. I said, who'd I ask, there's only two people there.
You, you had to take a copy of it out of your agenda. You didn't have a copy of it posted for, I knew you could see. It was supposed to be sitting out on a table where people could see it, and it wasn't. So I had to ask for it, calling the internet.
Oh, we need them people, because most of them there, we need them there.
Yeah. They told me Friday that we need, like I said, we're just getting our three. Yeah. I mean, they'll be... As far as I'm concerned, we're not, we gotta get to it. Yeah. There won't be a third reading.
I'd like to see you reschedule and make sure that they're gonna be there and tell them, we had a meeting here, how many people started up? You just didn't show up. That don't say a lot, that don't say a lot about how much we're worried about our water.
Before another meeting, I think, just like Brenda and some of the others have said, everybody needs to get together. I mean, you got a lot, you got information, bring it.
That's where it's somewhere.
Bring it. And we should, Marcus, Johnny, Johnny Schinkler, John, Brad, Ben, whoever has knowledge on water.
No, I, yeah.
Oh.
We need, we need...
It should all be here, we're together.
We, we need a petition out there of someplace that we can start getting a petition ready. I'm, I'm positive that we can get ninety percent of the people this time to sign that petition. But we have, we have to have a place where it's signed up, so we'll sign up here, sign up here. Just...
Who are we gonna send the petition to?
The N.C.
This is, have it on file to be ready in two seconds. We have to get copies made up to send to different organizations.
When we get, when we get everything aligned and know what we need, what we don't need, when we go for money, get the money, we have to be in compliance. That's the main reason for the raise in the water rate. We are in compliance for our water rate, we always, we have to be compliant to be able to fund it.
Yeah, but I, I, I understand what I'm saying to you, but, because they shut it down, this is an emergency crisis. It really is. And if the guys were not in compliance, they've shut our water off and put us, they've put the whole town in jeopardy. There's emergency funds out there someplace for that. We have to, and if we have the petitions ready to go, you have them on file, ready to do this. So I'm, that's all I'm saying to you, it's all I have. I'm a layperson, but I do know the popular people and a lot of us.
Paulie, excuse me, are they saying we're not in compliance right now?
Yeah.
By what means?
I don't know. Like I said, we didn't draw this up, maybe they added what, three hundred and some in the state of West Virginia? Or a hundred and fifty-four? What?
Well, four thousand gallon usage there were a hundred and fifty-four.
The Arabs are the one that drew this up. We know nothing about these rates.
Well, we had, we had a rate five years ago.
Uh, yeah. I've heard sixty-four. Western Forest, I had old water rates.
I have, I printed it out down the library.
Our rates, our rates were a buck with that one.
I don't, I don't know if this is just for the IJDC money or if it's just to get funding at all.
Do you got any figures there of what are, what your water income is and what your water experience is? And additional reserves, if you have any?
They probably have their dollars.
Because if we're, if we're doing that, I mean, I don't know if you have your reserves, but, yeah, I mean, if we're going, I'm very compliant. And that's, that's something should've been looked at, you know, in the last five years. I mean, and you're coming, when you're, you're giving a finish order on the public service, but raw water's not under that. That's a full separate deal. I, I don't understand why, that you're talking about raw water expenses and you're talking about being compliant. I just don't understand.
In the newspaper, Western Forest had a meeting in Allen, Missouri, stated in that meeting that Western Forest is not worried about Piedmont's water.
Ordered.
Uh...
Piedmont ordered, didn't it?
Well, that's what I'm saying. He, he made that statement, which probably, all in all, that he probably told you truth.
Yeah, but how, how does anybody make a statement like that? I saw one too.
And be about...
I guess, I mean, I, I, I didn't write about his speech. Yeah, so if you get a... Yeah, you got your ball, you know, that person, take care of your ball. We, we can't handle, you can't carry your bag, like, door, you know? But they've been working on their ball for years. You got to be in the program.
Yeah, but is, is that what he's saying? Or is that the way the rest of the council and the...
Well, he just said, you know...
I mean, that's my personal opinion.
Well, that was in the newspaper, Paul.
Yeah, I, I...
That's my, that's my opinion. If I wasn't, if I wasn't, uh, for feeling, they should...
Yeah, right. They would say, they would say, they would say, and me, because he's not worried about what goes on.
Yeah, but that's him.
That's the rest of them too. That's the rest of them too. It's the rest of them too, because they want, if they were concerned about your water over there that much, they'd be right here fighting for it, they're like, we can work around it, still somewhere in there. They need, they need, but everybody does. The whole thing here is, there's no planes, nobody's seen no footprints, or blueprints, maybe, of what's going on. How does water run there, what, what's done there? Anytime you make a, a new suggestion, nobody coming in. This water line, okay, that's your safe, everybody knows, everybody listens when you fix it. But this, these come two hundred thousand dollars, what everybody bases on, any way you put it, it's gonna be not no, not no renovation of the old line. Everything's gonna, we gotta bring everything new. The same thing, the example is flat tissue. DPA tells you gotta have this. They told them people that forty years ago. People were still not, said finally they got on the track, said, oh, our water's bad. When they finally figured out water bad, they get fixed. Now they got a whole new system, why? The government, the state government, didn't know what was going on. Okay? How many commissioners we got? Three, right? Three commissioners. Nobody's thinking, well, I'll, I'll see what I can do. Well, you, you, for me, see what you can do, then I'll get back with you. While you wait. Well, you wait, next week, next week, what, what commission is it? Well, I wrote a letter, this and that, you know, nothing happens. What do you mean, go to letter? Did it get back with you? Go ahead, well, let's get personally, you have people down here, they say this and that. Where's the blueprints? Where's the blueprints? What, what do you mean, send a letter? Show us the letter you sent to them, what did you say? Oh, well, something happened to Pima, didn't you water, is that what you letter said? Or did you write the whole situation? You had slides down, that wasn't part of us, nature. Southern estate, you know, yet are getting slow progress, but they're getting it done. They got still flood areas that haven't been completely done, but they're getting it done because they're willing to keep it up. Pressure on it, they're ready to go. You talk about engineering, poor engineers. Hey, hey, that's damn good, right? You got flow, does water still come through? Yeah, well, you're good, ain't you? They worried about your water line until, until, until it affects them. Now, where you, where, where you tapped into? Oh, well, you can, you can handle that, can't you? You, don't you charge people water bills? Yeah, well, you, you charge a little bit of that. They're not worried about, about you, because they don't, they're not living there. Same way too, when he's talking about Chesapeake. They, they worried about the people, they gonna charge the people where up here, that's natural water coming down here, that's new. Now you got the flushing, really got that tax bill, flushing the move and all that. Then people not even worried about it, just paid it, didn't have to Chesapeake. Chesapeake, why? Because it's considered, see, you have Chesapeake, you got crabs, you got porches, you got everything else from shrimp.
That's the best of us, our answer.
Well, look, we got one in Clough, those people up there, take care of that one up here. Where you got water or not? If you get enough people involved, like I said, that petition goes around, you see who, you know, how many, you said two hundred and seventy-one, right? Okay, they're looking at, oh, they only got two hundred and seventy-one people, one people in there, people. No, you got two hundred and seventy-one residential, residential people. You four people, a house ran up, over a thousand people. You gotta have babies and older, older and everybody else in there. They're just looking at you, seven, only got two hundred, only got two hundred people living there.
That should be all more reading for the office.
Yeah, and they said two hundred people, it's two hundred people, it's one, it was one person. Yeah, it's still going through the system. And then, then you, you do and say, well, this is said that, and that said, this guy, two hundred thousand dollars. Well, he ain't here representing, what, what, what are you doing? Does the meeting got bid on the this, or do we have to bid on the this? Well, our two hundred thousand dollars says, this guy will be replaced, they gotta play structure this. Well, who, who would you go? Well, we only studied this part. Wait a minute, you, you only study that part? Well, he said the line went from here to there, oh, who told you this? We walked with the town foreman. Who is it? This, he don't even know where dog on water street is, what are you talking about? You talk about, well, he don't even know what, what this line is, he's too busy working down there trying to get this line fixed. You gotta go in there and see some reports, like here, we have no reports. We have to have the shows where they work, where, where this two hundred thousand dollars, why you gotta have this priest? They're based on what their government said. You know, you gotta have two, no matter what, so you gotta have this priest. He may never, he work, go and figure how he do it. You know, go round off this number, you know, you need this number. I don't need it, big. I say, okay, that should take care of those pumpers being paid. Say, yes, what it is, who bought, who bought it, it's costing you, you know. But I guarantee you, when that petition goes along, long enough, they'll say, hey, wait a minute. And they'll say, what did you have? And they see that you got thousand people out of work, whatever, you know, which was your main thing, which was your main issue, you could have five, six issues. Like what I back on, one of the things. Hey, these people weren't down here. I guarantee if you had a foot, see how many will be here. You know, say nothing, I wiped up the town Pima, how many people be here? You have everybody from, 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 you know, what's it called? Governor?
FEMA.
FEMA, everybody, you have everybody here wanting to help. Oh, what can we get, we wanna help these people. You know, this is what FEMA does. Yeah, you see what FEMA does.
We're in an emergency right now.
That's right, and they know that we take care of that, that's what's the rep, rep, power of your, which T S C C, right there, on top of there, what they, this is what these people need.
The outrage should be with West Virginia right now, you talking about giving a petition, writing a letter. As far as I'm concerned, that's where it'll be, right there. And they all be here for the people of Pima, that's our neighbor, right over there across the river.
That's the end of the call.
Yeah, but, they're not worried about that. As far as I'm concerned, that's, that's not everybody, it's only one person. And why can't the people, this town be heard? Write letters, get it in a paper, or whatever it takes.
A lot of people didn't know, there was a six inch line that turned across the old Pima, West Virginia bridge. And when the term, when the Bible shut that, can turn that line in, right there, where they used to walk onto the bridge. And when the West Virginia had problems, we turned that line in and supplied them water for the filtration plant, lower it down. Because, and that was just the, you know, we helped, you, you helped us.
Well, that's where it should be, that's where it has been, that's where it should be.
Them days are gone, you know.
We had that real heat and freeze over here, we furnished, they furnished water to us.
I think in all people, uh, we want a lot of voice to be heard, I think that's which we, we should do a lot of that.
I might, we might, we might have.
Then we end up with the same problem, we don't have our own water. And West Virginia has so many problems with their water.
Yeah, they're in a big time.
I mean, yeah, I'm not sure, I mean, I'm sure for saying it all, they shouldn't worry to help us.
No, I'm just talking, I'm not talking about affirmative, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about we have to have the water adventure or whatever to get us over the hump. That's what I'm talking about.
Right, they, they should have.
Never get away from this reservoir, never, we're not hit by those waters. Uh, I'm talking about a ticket over there.
Well, I'll tell you, I said something, I'll say my-
This public hearing has to come to an end.
I'll say this, Ben, if I can help you.
You get with Ernie, don't, I don't wanna hear people say, do, 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 and then walk away, God, go ahead.
And Ernie, I don't care.
Ernie, you contact him, you find out.
Get a hold of him. I'd like to see him.
That's why I, we gotta get out of, we gotta get out of this public hearing.
I know, I have two calls, and I'm done. Number one is, that Ernie talked about how bad that pump is now, and I, I'm, I'm not gonna be here saying it's anything wrong with it, or it's completely crap. Before I let them build up there ten years ago, they built, completely rebuilt that pump, and then forced the town to won't be used. So, but I don't know how much has been used or anything, and it's not been used in ten years. So I'm not doubting where-
I'm just, why don't you go with Tim, I'll have to look at that stuff.
But, the other thing I wanna say is, I wanna concede to Ernie that, talking about the water in the tunnel, you know, being filtered on. When I was up there, that water was filtered, at one point in time, they was providing us with treated water, but then they cut that pipe off. But, uh, it's what information I've gathered, he is correct, it does come out of the tunnel. Uh, all of them.
Okay, okay, please. And we got to enjoy our evening.
Thank you.
We will go ahead to the five, we will take a class, we'll talk about what.
John, I would like to say, one view, one air, three pieces of waste, about any time I can, three times.
Oh, what a shame.
Love you.
Hey, man.
That's, that's probably where you can especially hand out, it turned into an honor matter. Now it's regular.
You guys, you guys love the city.
I'm the author. Thanks for having me. All right. Okay.
I'll see you all later, I'll have to go.
Ms. Rachel, you got something to say?
Yeah.
Give everyone a thought. Jesus almighty, thank you, thank you, thank the Lord, you see the problems that we have. Lord, yes, because of your life, and how still he is bold, God. Lord, give us all to live, what have to do, and how to do it. And not just be a hearsayer for doers, be doers, and not for doers. Like, for instance-
You might get a, you might get a son, they not concerned about the city of Pima.
We love you, we thank you for your done work, we thank you for your committed faith. And we know that you're able to do exceedingly and abundantly, all that we ask in the name of Jesus, Lord. Live on us and help us, Lord, we thank you for the city council, we thank you for the workers that we have, for the strength that you have given them, Lord. And we thank you for it. Now, I ask together, love these, let, uh, hand no dissemination while the soul die. Live on us and give us high strength, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Let's, let's, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is safe. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Charles was here earlier for public hearing. Did everybody get to read the minutes from the previous meeting?
Uh, maybe we should, we accept the words from the previous meeting.
Got a second?
I'll say it.
All favor?
Uh.
Oppose? Correspondents?
Mayor and Council, it, it is with deep regret that I am submitting my two week notice with the city of Pima. And I have accepted position with the city of West Virginia as their water superintendent and public works director. My two weeks will begin on September twenty-third. I have worked for the city these past thirteen years and have given the city my best. I will be available, needed, as I will still have my class two certification with the state. Again, thank you for the opportunity to work here, and I wish you nothing but the best in future endeavors. Sincerely, Timothy Johnson.
So that's the twenty-third for you?
We got this Monday.
Huh?
Monday.
So we've got two, next one, this is next one.
Extra, you see, it's Wednesday.
Are you and Erica there?
Yeah.
Handle it, we can get somebody else?
Yeah.
So what, the A and S? And did, could we deal with port time?
That's one thing I was gonna bring up a little later in the meeting, but I don't see why we can't. I, the whole time Kim's been gone, I've only been up here about four hours a day. Maybe on the, at the end of the month, when we do the M O R's and reports, he might be there one day a month for forty-eight hours.
So you wanna do the A and port time, but what's that? A and time is your port time?
Uh, I always think it'd be a good idea if you can get somebody to do it. Uh, most people that are licensed for this stuff, they already got jobs. I'd say it's worth a shot.
A and time, port time?
If you, if we have to get somebody full time, is it possible to work them, to have them doing other things other than work, or are they just strictly?
Yeah, we, we, we write that into their job description that after they're done with, that the water plant shut down, other than a court date, that they need to come out and do mowing, take care of any maintenance of the plant, uh, help put out in the city, uh, go on other important plates and repairs.
Does anybody else have any correspondence?
I said plenty of them up, but I don't get very many guys.
Officer report? Ben?
Well, the only thing I can say is, we're, uh, there's a, a lot of work going on as far as trying to do this water project. And, you know, yourself, we had a few things that were laying on the table that was supposed to have been casted in stone, so we seek funding for them, and then the rug got pulled out from under, even though we did have the funding. Now, the proposal now is the fact that I've, between you, the, the stuff you gave me and the, uh, the things that I've researched, I found out that the Potomac River is owned by Maryland. But Maryland doesn't have total control over the water flows in, in the shoreline. And I've contacted the, to the senator and a person from the EPA to take this up with the governor officials in Charleston. Uh, they were there Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. I haven't been able to get in touch with them, but I wasn't even supposed to contact them till Friday. But they're supposed to bring all this up, which I have some documents here, we pulled up the internet that, uh, West Virginia gained water rights under the seventeen eighty-five compact for the tunnel length of, from spring to bay, it's two hundred and fifty-seven miles. And the right to pull that off of the West Virginia and Virginia side is, uh, it's, it's the right of West Virginia and Virginia. And in two thousand and two, this went to court, uh, Virginia won, and consequently, they included West Virginia into that to gain the water rights. There are several other things that's, uh, on here also about, uh, the conclusion of the river. Now, let's back up here to these dates. West Virginia was not West Virginia at that time. It was Virginia. And when Lord Fairfax made the grants, uh, the majority of the Supreme Court, every rule, bearing its objections to the special master's report and, and the decree proposed by the state master affirming Virginia's sovereignty, the rights to the, to under the eighteen seventy-seven arbitration award to, to build structures or apparatuses to the shoreline or withdraw water from the Potomac River without regulation by Marri, by Maryland. The effect of the case on the interstate water dispute may be limited for two reasons. First, the decision turned into the interpretation of historical documents unique to the case, the seventeen eighty-five compact and the eighteen seventy-seven arbitration award. So the Potomac River, although particularly served as bond between Virginia and Maryland, in fact, belongs entirely to Maryland. The conflicts generally involve interstate waters, not interstate, not interstate laws. So, of course, decisions have opened the question of what law will apply in the future. Maryland's objectives to amount of, for amount of Virginia withdrawal, it's an obligation that, uh, when one considers the growth of Virginia, D C, and West Virginia suburbs, it sends in the world that there's gonna be that question about amount of draw. But, there's other things on here that says, uh, that as long as any draw off doesn't interfere with any navigation along the Potomac. Uh, communities such as ours here can draw water off from, or Virginia shorelines near midpoint in the Potomac Canal. So, basically, this is some of the things that I'm having with senators and the EPA officer, and, uh, the guys- and, uh, the guys looking into this from the Charleston side. As, no answers as of yet, and I wasn't expecting any. Another, uh, thing on, uh, my report, as we brought in this meeting, there's things out there other than West Virginia, and we're looking at, uh, Bloomington, and, uh, hopefully, uh, I can get a meeting set up with the, uh, water administrator over there, Bobby Guda, and see what we discuss the whole matter. We, we don't. It's kinda hard to get a hold of those people in, in Bloomington because there's no numbers listed as water commissioners or whoever, so, uh, I, uh, I'm gonna reach out to some other people to try to set me up a meeting with Mr. Will. And that's about all.
Paul?
Uh, a couple things. We had an auditor come here, like I had the question asked in the last meeting, and we could do that, kinda have an internal audit over our financial system here, and we did that last Friday. We had, uh, Mike Ryan come in here, and he sat down with us and went through, uh, we had a really good, really good meeting, and he went through our financial system and looked things over. Of course, we didn't have time to, to probably go do an intensive look, but we did look, and he looked, and he gave us suggestions and, and things, things that we can, uh, build off of and, and change, and things that will help us to improve our financial system, you know, which is to go, to get better.
Right.
And, uh, so he did that, and I was pretty typical with, uh, and so was he, with how far we've come. Uh, is anybody perfect? No, but we are sure trying to be as perfect as we possibly can. So, if you don't know what the mistakes are, you don't know how to fix them. So that was, uh, that was my goal, to get somebody here to look and tell us ahead of our audit. And that should be coming here shortly, should be getting somebody come in here for our actual audit. But this was just an in-house look, just to help us, so we know where we stand and what we need to improve on. So, that's completed, and thank you guys for letting that happen, and I get it out this Friday. Um, the other thing, still working on the stage, that, uh, wanna try to get put here on Backstreet. I think that is, uh, something that will be really nice for this town. I've talked to R and K, I've talked, talked to Thrasher, trying to get somebody that has an engineering background to come in here and help us design it. We don't want some kind of makeshift, something put together. Uh, we want something that's called the town's gonna be proud of, and we're all gonna be proud of.
We should be hearing about our branch.
Okay, good. But, uh, that's where that is, still working that. And, uh, went down to Kaiser, looked Thurs over, measured it, took pictures of it, talked to different ones down there, uh, trying to get ahold of a guy that actually built that. So I'm trying to, so go in the background work, trying to get some research done, uh, so we can move forward, but, uh, that's about where that is, that's all I have.
Sure.
I don't have anything else, Ernie, Ernie's got, uh...
I'll fill that come out of the floor.
Okay.
Oh.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Pretty much, everybody knew that, uh, Monday I came in, made my rounds, I found out a pipe round it, somebody tried to tear up the handicap swing again. They actually flipped this swing upside down, and had the wheelchair loading ramp back, and we used it as a right jump ramp. So, we, cameras, we had the under nail, we're covering the area. Uh, we had four cameras, and one time they stole one of them. So, I talked to Paula, I talked to Paul, I went ahead, I got new cameras, I'm gonna put them up down there, and that's, uh, stick, uh, those sticker signs that you put up on, like, the bathroom doors there, that this facility is monitored by security cameras. I'm gonna put them up down around the pavilion, salt building, and playground, and the bathroom. I am also talking with State Roof Department and see if we can get this up here by the pit stop on that sidewalk going up Child's Avenue, try and get something in there to make animals safer for pedestrians walking there. Then we already got that fence pushed over against the back of the building there, and what the rods you had put in there to stabilize it, I think they'll kick that out. So I'm gonna try to get State Roof to put a guardrail up there. Uh, we started shutting it down, we're gonna be blowing that up, put down for the set next week. Thank you, man. Got hot homes, uh, more hot homes still up. And we filmed the dumpster last week by cleaning out the water plant. End of my report.
And, what did, what did the playground, uh, is there any way that we can maybe look into fencing, the whole thing in, or at least the swings themselves? Because, you know, you pay the money, a lot of those ones.
You have that fencing up, don't you think?
Yeah, we, we've got that fencing on its skin up here that we didn't put up because we told not to, because if we got projects started up there, they would rip, they would rip it back out to put the new one in.
Maybe if we put it around here, they had to come into the playground and see one entrance, it would be less... Less likely that they're gonna clear around.
The only thing is there is, is, I don't know, they would be classified as private construction, but, uh, hopefully, I guess, we have to get the private rooms, the ground and see, uh, the church to see if we can, we can do that. Like I said, that, that swing says just cost them. It costs too much to, at the beginning, for these kids to just tear it, okay? And there's only a few kids that, that gets the use out of it, and it is, okay?
And this, this, not that sign, is that, that's the other thing? Yeah, that's everything.
The day of prayer, the, uh, two gods, the farmer's market, God puts the reward on the table.
Yeah.
Paul, Paul, yeah, yeah, he had that.
Those verve's cans are missing up there. I don't know whether that's plastic or what that is, but, uh...
They're, that's wood.
Is it wood?
That's all you got?
Yeah, that's all we have.
I, uh, anybody got any other finishes?
New business. We're not doing the final reading of the water rate, water project we're talking about. After advertising for the new police officer, we had one application of a certified officer who says he will be part-time for us, along with Eric Beach, his name is Dakota Spear. We need to get him up here, getting sworn in. There was any one other application, right? Uh, he wasn't certified. I need a motion, if he would like to have Dakota Spear to be our part-time officer.
I think a motion would definitely get our officer Spears as our part-time officer.
Second?
Second.
All favor? Oppose? Motion carried. I'll contact him. Was Robbie? Yeah. Actually, him and Eric both work up at Potomac State.
Okay, I try.
They got all the certifications, and they can also train. Anything else? And Robbie's gonna be back, he'll be back by the fifteenth morning?
Uh, probably before that, uh, but he'll be on weekends, probably before that. He'll be back, uh, around here, he's gonna be part-time also.
Yeah, I mean, between the three of them, that will fool the air, of course. And with that, last year on October second, we had a, a national coffee, a cop dating library. Since we're gonna have new officers, this is a lively thing, I'd like to do that again, so I'm gonna see if I can get a new officer to, so citizens can meet the new cop, so. When we swear in, I'll say something about maybe a one act, and put on an extra agenda. And Officer Beach had to buy a tactical carrier, whatever the police stuff is. He paid for it himself, and he wanted to know if he could be reimbursed for it, it's two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. It's a vest carrier and a holster. How much? Two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. He paid for it out of his pocket, but wanted to know, 'cause I asked him if we could reimburse him for it, it would become property of the City of Pima. Right. And he agreed. Yeah. So he can pay him, it will become property.